The Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975[15.04][15.04]intitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in the Borough Hall, Runnymede Post Office, Mary Road School, Alliance Bingham School, Grace Downing School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. Please rise and join us in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Here.
Mrs. Beebe.
Here.
Mrs. Davidson.
Here.
Mrs. Farrell.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Panzarella.
Here.
Mrs. Samson was unable to make it this evening. Mrs. Faulkner.
Here. Thank you. Also present, Mark Ainucci, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Shaw McCarron, Business Administrator and Director of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Jade Yezzi, Principal, sorry, I didn't say you're picking with Downing School, Mr. Steve Peely, Principal of Volt School, Mr. Steve Maloney, Vice Principal of Volt School, and Mrs. Gladys Tawber, Director of Special Education. At this time, I need motion to approve regular meeting minutes from October 19th. Motion made by Maria, seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Mrs. Beebe.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Faulkner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I hear we have some special visitors today.
We have some special visitors today. From St. Herro's class, she was one of two of the people of her coffee club that she runs every week at Bingham School.
Not every week.
Well, I've heard great things about that coffee club. And she's going to hopefully serve some things up so that sort of our school can manage more better.
So, Mrs. Terrero, this is Jason Lender, Gabby Diacino, Mason Davy, and Mr. Smithley, who's a big part of our coffee club. Mr. Smithley is a huge help. So, when I took on this role, I wanted to bring something like, that would encompass everything, like math, financial literacy, social skills for my class and my students, and give them something, you know, to feel confident and let them shine. So, it was something I really, like, thought hard about, and I definitely want to thank, like, everybody for being so supportive. Mrs. Yezzi was, like, super, like, from the get-go, very supportive. Dr. McCarron, everyone's been super helpful. And we're really excited about it, and the kids really love it, and I really love it. Who doesn't love coffee? So, um, and the pictures just show it all. I mean, the kids, like, look forward to it every Friday. Well, it's not every Friday. Couple Fridays a month, but hopefully we'll build to that. So, my purpose and mission, the coffee club is a unique club that is based in my resource room. I have my peer helpers, Mason and Gabby, they come down from third grade every meeting, and they just are a huge help and models. The students learn so many things. I mean, this is just like a smidge of what they learn, but they learn appropriate social skills such as peer-to-peer talk, teamwork, making eye contact, manners, responsibility. The students also learn on the more academic side, financial literacy, money management, money computation, reading and writing skills. And I feel like teamwork makes the dream work really, like, falls into place with this because everyone's been so supportive, and it's not like an easy club to run. I mean, Mr. Smithley's been, he comes at 7:30 on Fridays and helps me, like, prep the coffee for the kids, and the kids show up at 7:30, so, like, thank you to the parents for getting them there at 7:30. It's really been awesome. So, some of the jobs and responsibilities, does it, Mason, do you want to talk about what the barista does?
Um, the barista makes the coffee and asks how many sugar and cream and tins in a bag with a stir and a straw.
Good. And then the clerk, the clerk collects the money, and Gabby, you want to tell them how much we charge a cup?
We charge $1 a cup.
That's a steal.
Yeah.
That's a good steal.
Our greeter, what does our greeter do? Our greeter stands at the door and says welcome and good morning. Social, or cleanup crew, make sure that there's no mess and is always ready for a mess, to clean up a mess. Social media snaps pictures so we can brag about our coffee club. I try to update my website with pictures. Our manager kind of jumps in, just like a store manager. If you've ever worked retail or worked at fast food, they jump in whenever there needs to be help. Advertising passes out flyers that promote the new coffee flavors. We also have a points card, which I meant to put on the slide, but they also hole punch the points card, and once they buy, like, 10 cups, they're going to get a free coffee. And stock specialists, they are in charge of making sure there is always enough creamer, sugar, cups, lids, and stirs, and they also tally how much we use per meeting, and then we, like, do some math with that. The kids fill out job applications prior to the next, like, coffee club meeting, so they're actually, like, applying for jobs. And we have a lot of, like, different levels, so whether they're drawing a picture and labeling it with the job that they want, or they're writing sentences on the job that they want, they fill that out, and then I try to give them the job that they want, but I also try to, like, have them experience all the positions. So, Mr. Michelle, who does our Bingham Buzz, made this video back in October, and I feel like this really, like, shows you, like, what coffee club is all about, so I just wanted to include this real quick. This was like a very busy morning. So, um, this is where, like, the financial literacy comes in. Shortly after a coffee club meeting, we review how the meeting went, and we count our earnings. We then graph our earnings, so I tried to give a picture of, like, our graph. We then decide how much to put into our savings account and how much we will need to spend on restocking our supplies, so I actually have, like, little Tupperware containers that are our accounts. So, one is, like, our spending account, and one is our savings account, and Mrs. Ross obviously keeps them under lock and key. So, any money saved, we plan on working together to decide on how we want to incorporate in our end-of-the-year party, our end-of-the-year celebration. A lot of friends want donuts, pizza, so, you know, those things cost money, so we're going to use the money for that. And would you guys like to try some samples? We have coffee ready, so my friends are going to help with.
And since you didn't take money, we're going to get our friends some pizza and donuts for the holidays, so they can stay at the.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. So, I'll be in contact with this prayer, and the board here will get you guys pizza and donuts, and you use your money for something else. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'll be texting everyone to give me money. That's so funny. I didn't know that. Were you ready to go?
Ready.
Okay. So, at this time, we're open for public comment on agenda items only. Does anybody have any public comment on agenda items only? If not, then Mr. Ainucci will give us the superintendent report.
Thank you very much. The facts will be coming out tonight. District enrollment study, we have faculty increases or decreases, so as time we met. Just a reminder to the board, we have the children's district, conferences are coming up, we have it this week and then next week, Monday through Tuesday. Information was sent out to parents, if you sign up, every parent will be able to sign at those times to make arrangements to see an opt-in, so they have the option of in-person or virtual. Some parents prefer the virtual because they don't have to leave work or leave their homes, so it works out pretty well, so kind of have that flex height when you still want to play. But we have, signs up for both, so it's pretty good. Just a reminder, we have some phone calls. The principals, every time there's a security drill, the once-a-month security drill that we have to do, get the set of information home to families, and sometimes we get some phone calls, or why are we required by the state to do that, strictly for the types of active shooter and things like that. Fire drills don't have to be done, and there's some schools that do do that, but you don't have to send an application out for fire. Sometimes you do, sometimes you don't, just in case. If there is an alarm, sometimes the alarms go off for reasons we don't know about, could be sensors, could be fault, or something like that. If that happens, we usually do send information to the parents, but it does, because we've had in the past a cold freezing rain, a fire alarm off, and we obviously plan a fire alarm five-year-old for like, one of those days. Holiday committee, Thanksgiving is coming up next week, they'll be distributing their baskets every year. We appreciate a real holiday committee, we have more time. They do stay after school, and parents usually pick these up here at Volt's. If there's anything the parents can't get, if they can't get here, we make arrangements to do under that, so that will come up next week. Transportation, we're in a lot, excuse, facility. Bingham APR, there's been some issues when we've had the heavy rains, it seems like in the last couple of years. Frank has had some people out to, ultimately, the roof is going to need to be replaced at Bingham, especially over the APR. We're looking at some things that they could do to maybe get us four or five more years out of that. I don't say the technical terms or anything like that, it's not applied with, you know, different things they have to do. So, Frank's working with some companies to put some ideas for that, so we can get some like that. But that roof is kind of, right, Dr. McCarron?
Isn't that the, like, one of the, like, isn't it newer compared to what?
Well, from the need of purpose built, which I want to say it was, like, what was that?
I mean, I know a lot, but I don't know. He was also.
It was actually when Joyce was on the storyboard, because she's actually on the plaque, so we're going back, like, nine years.
You're like 20, 25 years ago.
Okay. Because she was.
Right, 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 okay.
Facility usage, mainly our facility usage is still here at Volt's, mainly because of the gym and the cafeteria as well. Anybody who wants to use a facility that has a proper form to do that, just don't show up either to use that, so just keep in mind, if anybody asks you those questions, it's an easy thing to set it up. It's a Runnymede group, we don't charge for anything based over that. Right now, our basketball is starting up, I think December 1st. PTA has done a lot of different events over the last couple of months. Most of their stuff's been filled out since August, so they've done a great job, and something pops up. We can always have something retro approved if needed, so it's like, somebody wants something and they call you tomorrow and say, "Look, can we use the August from Saturday?" We could always make those arrangements.
Although they shouldn't be calling us, they should be calling.
Well, if they do, if you're at the academy, as they say.
And that information's available on the.
That's right, yes, that's what I said.
Buses, we're in a lot better shape than we were in the last couple of years, not only for sports, but for day-to-day operations. We do have a substitute part-time, excuse me, part-time driver up for improvement, so we're excited to have that first week again. So, we're in a better situation with drivers, which has been a difficult thing to secure in the last couple of years, so we appreciate your honesty. And we want to buy these for favorite times of the year, not only for. Back here to work tonight. In climate weather, we cannot have virtual days for inclement weather again this year, so any type of snow or freezing rain like that, we try to make the decision as early as possible. While I do consult with Black Forest Pike, we always make the best decision, that's all I mean. We have a pretty good batting average the last couple of years, as far as.
I never say basically bad.
I'm saying, and there's nothing about sports, I'm not going to. He thinks batting average is a football term, so we've been doing pretty well the last couple of years with that, so we will make good decisions. And all that information gets put out on real time, Facebook, and you just have to email us as well. Emails, we don't forget a lot of, people don't open emails, they used to, ten years ago, that's something we're trying to still use, but text, the blast usually goes better and Facebook as well.
At the website.
We also have TikTok, we can't put on that now.
Mrs. Yezzi hasn't started that yet.
Start a TikTok, snow, snows thing?
We'll have to have, just right, she'd love to have that, it's one of his goals for next year. Jade, that'll be his goal for next year.
Exactly.
For all my contacts and my. Don't have any questions? If you do, please reach out, because I appreciate everybody's support. That's all I have for the Thanksgiving.
And I just will say, like, for some of the, like, I, that was something like that, the board and I, like, I guess it's probably me in the most part, like, when Mr. Ainucci will be like, "Hey!", I'll be like, "I don't care, no offense." I mean, obviously, I care because I work there, but I don't care what Black Forest Pike Regional is doing. What can we do to get our kids there, so we're not here on June 20th? So, like, that's why he said that little thing, because that's, I really honestly feel that if we can safely get our staff and our students here, then I would want them to be here, even if there's a couple of snow flurries on the ground. So, I just wanted to reiterate that that is something that as a board is, like, you know, haven't really had to worry about it too much. If we didn't have any last year at all, then the year before that, we could do it virtually. So, if, they say it's supposed to be a pretty rough winter, but, like, we just try and have our admin team make the decision based upon our students and staff here, what we can do. Any other questions from Mr. Ainucci?
For curriculum.
Time out.
Sorry.
Will we, Monday through Friday, 5:45 to 9:00, facility use before holidays?
Um, we usually, I mean, it depends, if there's a hand thing, sometimes we have.
I'm doing the schedule, so I read.
If you send me that information of what you're thinking, I can give you some, like, clues.
Because it's going to fall, like, President's weekend, Martin Luther came again, Christmas.
If the schools aren't open, we're out of it.
All right. But the night before is where I.
So, like, Wednesday, say, like, next Wednesday, for example, it's not December 1st yet, but.
Yep. We usually work.
Dr. McCarron.
So, for curriculum, we've been working with our social emotional learning consultant, who's been working across the district at all three schools. She's been doing professional development onsite with staff members in all areas, and we have our literacy consultant coming back to work with our K through 5 teachers in the next two weeks for our Fontana Cornell curriculum during literacy. Our math coach, along with myself, Mr. Peely, Mr. Maloney, have been working with our math teachers just on best practices in terms of assessments, benchmarking, testing, talking about how we can make sure we address those gaps and build student stamina when it comes to answering questions, and, you know, best practices when it comes to that. We've also been having conversations as far as what assessment will look like moving forward in May when we go back to NJSLA, and how we'll be testing students and how that might look differently than it used to. So, we might be having students get, receive their testing from their actual academic teachers instead of from their homeroom teachers, and kind of changing the way in which testing looks in that sense. Also, right now, we are in the process of finalizing all setups for our special education testing, which we have to provide by the middle of December for our students who don't take the NJSLA or the Star Strong Assessment. The state mandating that we give the Star Strong Assessment, they felt like they wanted to give the same opportunities, is what they called it, to all of our special education students as well. So, unfortunately, we will have to administer that prior to December. In terms of the business office, November 15th is a huge date in New Jersey school districts because pretty much any and every report is due. So, final reports are due, budget expectations as far as your preschool numbers are due. I have been going to different trainings on procurement that the state's been offering in terms of how we're getting different items into the district, and then also, Mr. Ainucci and I just have been having meetings regarding preschool expansion, so that's a possibility for us to possibly gain an additional classroom to do next year, but we will see what the state offers in that sense. That's one of those situations where we have to tell the state that we are expecting to have an additional preschool classroom, because we can't go back to the state after the fact and tell them we have the opportunity. They will tell us that we're locked out for a year. So, we can tell them now, and then if something doesn't happen, or we say we're going to move to the following year, they just won't give us the funding for that classroom next year, but we can then apply for it later.
So, you're telling us that we need to tell the state for funding?
Yes, yes. And at this point, I feel as though we don't have full capacity when it comes to preschool as far as all of our student population, and we do have a waitlist, which we've had for the past two years, so we definitely would be able to.
How many kids are on the waitlist?
I would say it usually ranges between 15 to 20 students, which 15 is a classroom.
Okay.
And with that being said, if we got one classroom, it would be easy to fill. If we got two, we would be looking for 30 students, but at that point, we would do a much heavier push in terms of getting students enrolled.
With regard to the planning board, the townhouse group came again, and their applications, I would say it's still.
Sure.
It's a year, but planning for the future, you'll need those 30 expenses.
I agree.
That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. McCarron? Uh, the district reports are attached, principals, nurses, building grounds, special education report, any questions there? No? Other special reports? PTA, Sam, you have anything for us?
Uh, yeah, Pretzels was pleased, was great. We had a good G back, we think that was a fun event, seemed like the kids had fun. Designer Bag Bingo is Friday, doors open at 6:00, and we're going to start at 7:00. We do have the Mile, Dine to Donate, Monday, November 28th. It's going to be all day. And then the only other thing is, we're going to do Holiday Family Night, Monday, December 12th. That'll be here, we're doing APR, and we'll have C and D here for families that want to take pictures.
What are you calling that?
Holiday Family Night.
Thank you. Any other reports at this time, Miss Bell? No? New business? I need a motion to approve items numbers 1, 2, 3 under property and transportation.
I'll make a motion number 1, 2, 3 under property and transportation.
Motion made by Patty.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Besides Maria's, she'll get that. Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Mrs. Beebe.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Faulkner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The only thing I want to mention is number 3 in terms of us transporting for away games.
Yes.
Other schools are putting out for quotes for buses for transportation during that time. Each bus run is anywhere from $350 to $400 at that point. So, to put it in perspective, that's changed drastically since the pandemic.
Yes.
Usually be anywhere from about $200 to $225 for a bus run, and you're talking an hour and a half to two hours.
Yeah.
Take them, drop them off, and bring them back. So, I mean, when you look at that amount over time, it's definitely adding up for us.
We, we, we know that, Dr. McCarron, thank you.
Sure.
Yes.
I wish.
Yes.
Mark's not here. Who picks where the certain grade levels go in field trips?
Teachers.
Yes?
Teachers and administrators.
We'll talk next time.
Okay. At this time, I need a motion to approve personnel, items numbers 1 through 7, 7 was added.
I'd like to make a motion to approve numbers 1 through 7 under personnel.
Motion made by Naomi, seconded by Patty. Any questions there? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Mrs. Beebe.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Faulkner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under finance, I need a motion to approve items numbers 1 through 7, there was 1 added there as well.
I'll make a motion to approve items 1 through 7.
Motion made by Angel.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Mrs. Beebe.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Faulkner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Curriculum, I need a motion for item number 1.
I'll make a motion for item number 1 under curriculum.
Motion made by Patty.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lisa. Yeah, you already have one today. Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Mrs. Beebe.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Faulkner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Policy and public relations, a motion to approve item numbers 1 to 3. Motion made by Maria.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Any questions?
Just with number 3.
Sure.
That involves our police and our fire as well, when you do the whole security thing, that involves those two on public safety, correct? Everybody's involved, good.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Mrs. Beebe.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzarella.
Yes.
Mrs. Faulkner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, we're open for public comment. Does anyone have any public comment at this time? Hi, just state your name and address, please.
Certainly. Good evening. My name is David Steinberg. I live at the Little Luntz and House, 825 East Columbus Bridge Road, apartment 314. And I'm also a vice president of the Amish Army. And the reason why I'm here is because we're doing lots of things in town, and lots of things are being planned. I'd like to get at least one member of the school board to come and check us out, and perhaps become part of our board as well. You just, are you familiar with the mural on the Green Pike? Have you seen the two that were done since then?
The other side of the coast?
Sorry? I'm. So we wanted to secure a quality person to fill a gap in for a month or two until people go out on maternity leave or family leave, so we're excited.
Welcome.
Welcome, welcome.
Congratulations. I'll put that one in there.
Soon great, I would say. It really is.
At this time, we're open for public comment. Does anyone have any public comment at this time? Hi, just say your name and address, please.
Certainly. Good evening, my name is David Steinberg, I live at Lunsen House, eight twenty-five East Comets Bridge Road apartment, eighteen. And I'm also, I'm vice president of the Reimagine Run Me. And the reason why I'm here is because we're doing lots of things in town and lots of things are being planned. I'd like to get at least one member of the school board to come and check us out and perhaps become part of our board as well. You just, are you familiar with the mural on the pink plate? Have you seen the two, the two that were done since then?
The other side of Cokes? The other side of Cokes?
The other side of Cokes and the other side of Cokes is one of them. What do you think the other one is?
The rooster? The rooster?
No, that's in there.
No. The other one, you know where Reimagine Run Me is, one on nine?
Yes.
Leap Studio. On the other side of the studio where the blue bird is, the rest of the wall has been done. Well, way, way in back, which you can't see from, from the front unless you take a walk back there. We're doing a lot of things. We just signed an agreement with a group called the Community Design Collaborative. They're providing pro bono services, architectural, as well as consultant services. And this is going to affect the Black Forest Pike and the Charm Pike, Comets Bridge Road, which is part of a redevelopment area. The town has a facade rent there and we're gonna start spitting things up. And I think it's really important that we get somebody from the school board to be able to come and join us. Our regular meeting is actually tomorrow evening at seven o'clock. Hopefully somebody will be able to join us here.
Do you, do you have a regular meeting time and day?
A big one.
Do you have a regular day?
Yeah, Thursday, Thursday at seven PM is our regular meeting.
Leaps, window shop.
At Leaps, right. Thank you, appreciate that. And don't forget, we're, does anyone know what's gonna happen on April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-six?
I hope to be alive, how about you, do you know?
I know.
Tell me.
It's funny you should ask me. Run Me will be celebrating its one hundredth birthday. We need to start planning soon. And Reimagine, I think it's gonna take, we roll, we're gonna involve all the groups in Run Me because our town's gonna be a hundred years old, we should celebrate. And our nation's gonna be two hundred and fifty years old. So maybe we can get involved with the Community National Constitution Center and do appropriate data to help celebrate our birthdays as well. So lots of things are starting to happen and lots more things are gonna happen as well. But we need, we need to involve everybody.
You need to tell them when your board meetings are. You need to tell them when the board meetings are, that's what you want.
Generally, our board meetings are the Saturday before the regular meeting, which I think will be, it'll depend, it's Saturday before.
Saturday before the third Thursday?
Don't you have to be on the board to go to a board meeting?
For me?
Don't you have to be on the board?
Not necessarily, we've had a few people come.
What time is that?
I'm gonna say nine AM.
Okay.
On a Saturday.
Thank you for coming, we can talk about this and then get a representative.
I would really appreciate that and it would be very, very helpful if we were to do this because normally it's gonna be Friday, because Run Me is already there. And we all can make it happen together.
Thank you, Ms. Steinberg.
You're welcome.
Your honor, thank you. At this time, any other public comment? If there's no other public comment, then our next regular board of education meeting date is set for December fourteenth and it will be here until further notice. We have a leaky roof.
Haven't we already discussed January's meeting? Are we still doing that?
Um, yeah, I wanted to, but we also have December, but we can do it now to get it set soon. I, I had asked the board to change the reorg and Farrell was doing it Tuesday.
Tuesday, the third.
The third. Our meeting is set for the fourth, but I had asked you guys that Sammy's first match, high school match in New Jersey. So if we could do it on Thursday instead. It was okay with you guys. Does anyone? Do you have an issue on Thursday?
No, January fifth.
Yes. Fifth, fifth.
First January fifth.
My husband's birthday.
Well, I mean, I'm not coming on the fourth, so it's totally up to you guys. I mean, no, it has to be the fourth or the seventh. Yes, so it has, it has to be. And so I'm just letting you guys know, I, I, I'm not coming on the fourth.
So listen, you know you won't be here for Charles. You can't be here for that. She's being sworn in, November Monday.
We're off Monday.
We're off Monday. Let's all come in Friday. Can't be Tuesday because there's that big celebration.
Event, big event, I heard, yeah. So, well, we'll have to make, we'll have to make a decision, think about it.
We're finding the promoting officers that we're hiring.
Yes. So we'll have to, we'll have to make a decision as of December because I'm not, I'm not coming on January fourth.
I'll be here.
Yeah. So.
If you swear, Naomi, is it unethical?
I'm being sworn, I have to be sworn in too.
But I'm saying if we do it your day, is it unethical to swear?
No, people have been sworn in.
So I can swear you in your life.
Let me, let me talk to families who work.
Well, she'll have a problem with the early Tuesday, so no offense, but, but, I mean, I'll, I'll have a meeting at three o'clock. I mean, three, well, not three, but four o'clock, but we can, it's just, I'm not missing, so. I made that very clear when I got, when I was, I'm not missing any of his matches, so. And, and listen, I also don't mind if you guys want to keep it on the fourth, but I just want to let you know, the way things have happened with reorg, then someone else has to start thinking about being the board president. Because then that's not me, because I won't be here, or the vice president that day.
I have another question.
Somebody has to start thinking about that.
Is that still the only Wednesday that's affected for you?
Correct.
That's still the only one?
The only one.
Because just so everybody knows, I'm pushing to stay Wednesdays, not go backwards to Tuesdays.
No, that's the, I, the whole, I looked at the whole schedule. No, there's not an issue with December and there's not an issue with February, March. The only issue sometimes is like vacations, but I'm not down till August and that's way ahead later, so. We'll need a motion to adjourn, we'll discuss this in December.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd have it, meeting's adjourned.